All right, good evening. I'd like to call over the Concord Board of Trustees Special Meeting for the continuation of a public hearing. Can I have the roll call, please?
Mr. McIntosh.
Present.
Mr. Don Dorfer.
Present.
Mrs. Lucci.
Present.
All right. This is the continuation of public hearing for zoning amendment application 2021-1 by ALM Lake Properties LLC requesting a rezone, a zoning resolution map amendment and preliminary plan approval from the current zoning district of R1 Residential to R2 Residential Conservation Development for the following properties. 10090 Hus Road, current parcel number 10A026C000550, owned by Shirley A. Lockstromin. Hus Road Rear, current parcel number 10A026C000510, owned by Shirley A. Lockstromin. 10100 Hus Road, current parcel number 10A026C000620, owned by Shirley A. Lockstromin. Morley Concord, current parcel number 08A0260000750, owned by William H. Lockstromin TR. 7574 Morley Road, current parcel 08A026000030, owned by Jerry V. Patriarca. 7554 Morley Road, current parcel 08A0260000220, owned by Jerry V. and Constance M. Patriarca. And a portion of 0IC Square Concord, current parcel 08A0260000560, owned by Humanitarian Consulting Limited. All right. So I will go ahead and read into the record an email that was received eight minutes after the start of our last meeting, just for the purpose of getting it on the record. Comments are from Vanessa Pessek. It says, "Hi, Andy, I can't attend the public meeting. Can you please read these into the record at the public meeting or during audience comments at the trustee meeting? Thanks, Vanessa." What analysis has Concord done to determine the ideal demographics for Concord? What steps have the township taken to move toward the ideal demographics? 2010 statistics indicate a population of people aged 55 and over in Concord is 39%. Yet the Ohio percentage of this same age group, 55 and over, is only 31%. Why would Concord want to accept this residential conservation development that only increases the number of seniors in Concord? While some residents may want to downside and move into this development, can we be assured that only Concord residents will live in this development? From other RCU developments and smaller lots, many of the... Okay, it's good. Oh, it's in the back. Residents move in from other cities outside of Concord. This increases the number of seniors, thus skewing and distorting Concord's demographics even more. Then I want to... Administrator, Ms. Rose, would you want me to read both of these letters in from the zoning commission and the planning commission?
I would, sir.
Okay. Letter dated May 26 to Mrs. Heather Freeman of Concord Township Zoning from the Lake County, Secretary of Lake County Planning Commission, Mr. David Radashi. Mrs. Freeman, the Lake County Planning Commission took under consideration the above-mentioned district and zoning changes, text changes at their regularly scheduled meeting on Tuesday, May 25, 2021. The Lake County Planning Commission recommended the district amendment be made as well as the text amendments with the following comments and recommendation. Recommend rezoning the 34.2428 acres from R1 Residential to R2 RCD Residential Conservation District. It is believed the property in question would be better developed as RCD than the conventional R1 zoning district in order to preserve open space in sensitive areas, following the township's comprehensive plan from 2004. Section 5 definition of brewery, distillery, and winery does not define what those uses actually are, only that they should be produced in less than micro counterparts recommend defining brewery, distillery, and winery are. Where available to help with any aspect of this recommendation, if you have any questions, please feel free to call Dave Radashi, Director, or Joseph Rose, Minor 1. I would add, just to clarify, that I believe the second bullet point when they talk about the distilleries and wineries was a text amendment change that we made last meeting, so that is... we're through that issue. And then a letter dated June 2nd, addressed to myself, Concord Board of Trustees, from Heather Freeman of the zoning department. At their meeting on June 1, 2020, zoning commission held public hearing on proposed zoning map amendment to the Concord Township zoning resolution as outlined below. The zoning commission recommended approval of the proposed zoning text amendment by unanimous vote. The proposed zoning map amendment application and supporting documents, as well as recommendation to planning permission are enclosed. The board of trustees will now schedule a public hearing, which we did and we are in continuance of. So now that we've got that into the record, I'm going to start off by asking the board if they have any questions or comments since we continued the public hearing, whatever that was, a couple weeks, week or two ago.
I'll start.
Okay.
In regards to the questions that were written into the record, I just want to comment briefly. You know, my interpretation we're here for in regards to this plan consideration is it's a land use decision. With that, you know, I know that the township in 2014 and the comprehensive plan addressed the demographics. I'm not certain that, you know, question as far as each group of 55 and over is considered a senior group. I would reflect that my interpretation is that it's middle-aged, 65 and over, or senior type.
Sorry, I don't feel very senior, and I'm over 55, so...
But, so I don't know. I don't know how relevant that is to this decision that we have to make as a board. Like I said, I think it's based on, we're here to determine whether or not the land should be rezoned from R1 to RCD, which is again a land use decision. So I just wanted to address that briefly, since you read it into the record.
Mrs. Freeman, can you clarify exactly what we're zoning, what we're deciding on today? From in your text, like what is it that we are deciding on based on the continuation of this hearing today, just for the group?
So tonight, the board has to decide whether or not it's proper to rezon this property from the R1 to the R2 Residential Conservation District development. One of the things that you consider is the recommendation of the planning commission, the zoning commission, and is it in compliance with or in line with the recommendations of our comprehensive plan? The 2004 plan does recommend that we try to pursue residential conservation development and also in our 14 plan update. So I think the decision tonight is, does this plan meet the purpose and intent of an RCD? Is it preserving the open spaces, the natural features that you want to see protected? And obviously, we want to make sure the density is appropriate as well. So that's your decision tonight.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there... because we continue the meeting, I'll just check real quick. Is the board, is there any questions for the developer? Do we want to see if anybody here, before I open up to audience comment or question?
If we covered it, we'll see what you can bring up.
Okay. If the applicant has anything they'd like to add, if not, I'll just make sure the... I'll look as an opportunity to speak and then we can discuss.
Hi, Jeff Small, 7992 Stillwater Court. Just wanted to thank you guys for making this special meeting happen. So we updated some submitted plans and landscaping plans per your request and made some modifications and tweaks. So I could bring Neffen Associates up, or Brian from Neffen Associates up to go over those changes, if you guys feel like that would be helpful?
Yeah, that'd be great. I know that was one of the issues with some of the residents, with the landscape plan and the buffer.
Sure, sure. So Brian, come up and kind of go over those.
Brian, Brian Yolenrock, Neffen Associates, 6405 York Road, Permites. So last time we were here, we, there's some, we got the plans in not too long, or pretty close to the meeting dates, and there's a lot of questions that came up through that process. So we spent time doing this, kind of clarifying those items. We added the landscape plan, like Jeff mentioned, that was kind of discussed a lot. And if you get the plan up... So what I'll do is kind of run through what's been updated on the plan. This plan set has been dated 6/23/21. One of the things that we do on every revision is put a revision date, just so we know that everybody's looking at the most current set of plans. So the first thing we did is the site data has been modified a little bit. There's a slight change to the area. That was due to a property line on this bottom corner that needed a slight adjustment. The square footage changed just by a few square feet, so that matches up to what we sent in as an updated legal description for the rezoning area. So everything matches up, everything lines up now. Another thing that we did with our site data is we updated our calculations so that we calculated the open space two ways. We did it including the stormwater management sign areas, what we call them easements, and then we calculated again without. So it ends up being 36% if we include it and 30% if we exclude it. Then the other thing that we added is the walking trail, which ties these three units into the subdivision. The frontage would be, we're proposing that to be a concrete sidewalk behind the right of way, outside of the right of way, just because we have driveways that come in and out, and then a multipath that would extend through here, behind the signage and connect to the subdivision, kind of keep that more of a natural materials through the open space. And then we also updated the, there's some question about the pull-off area for the cluster, the mailbox units. We eliminated that. We also eliminated the mailbox units. We talked to the local post office. They said it's our choice whether or not we do cluster boxes or individual lots. So I was, I stand corrected on that one. I thought we wouldn't be able to do it, but we have on this one, so we have the choice on that one. So we've just eliminated it, just to make things more simple, more what people are used to as far as mail delivery. So we talked about the landscape plans. We've added, there's like four or five sheets into this set, which is a preliminary landscape plan. This will, we'll add more detail into this if we get into the final plans and plans, which will call out plant materials. Right now, we're kind of calling them out as kind of general trees, shrubs, that type of stuff. So we've landscaped the frontage, and there's some enlargements, which I'll get to, to kind of walk you through those. We've landscaped the islands, and also shown some landscaping at the clubhouse area. So this is the clubhouse area. We have the parking lot. We have some shrub screening, some trees, and then also some screening around the backside of the pool area, typically, typical what you would see in a clubhouse type setting. The cul-de-sac areas, we have a central landscape island. We have put most of the plantings closer to the middle. We have an outside ring of stone and, and grass, and so that in case a big vehicle comes through, like a semi or something like that, for some reason, it doesn't destroy the landscaping as you head around the cul-de-sac. For the, for the frontage, we talked about the path. This is the path that runs in front of the houses, runs through the landscaping. And then at the entrance, we have two entrance signs, which I'll show you an elevation of that, conceptual elevation of that later on. But there's two entrance monument signs flanking the entrance. We looked at the existing fence that's there now, and it's actually in pretty good shape, and it's actually in a great location, and it's got four rails to it. So what we're doing is proposing to maintain a good majority of that, which runs along this portion of the frontage, and then we'll tie that into the signage, and then it runs along a portion of the frontage here, and then we'll continue it along the part of the frontage where it ends or doesn't, doesn't work with the current site plan. This is a quick elevation. Like I said, there's a split rail fence along the frontage, which is three rail. Then we would drop it down to, I'm sorry, it's four rails. We'll drop it down to three rail as we turn into the sign. This would be a stone monument sign, have a little curve to it, would identify the entrance, modest in scale and shape. So one of the things that was talked about in the last meeting is how would the disturbed areas within the open space be restored? In addition to that, how would the landscaping around the pond look? Those type of questions. This is a project that we did. It was actually a Walmart in South Euclid, where we took, we actually made a park behind it where we did our stormwater management, and we have paths that go around all of this. We maintained some of the trees where we could, and this is an example of it. We went in and landscaped this with natural vegetation. So this is all native wildflowers, grasses that end up revegetating this area. And one of the things I, this was done probably close to 10 years ago, and that's when this picture was taken. And what I found, I just went back there a year ago, and a lot of the existing trees that were in the area were actually starting to reseed themselves. So we're starting to see oaks and things kind of reestablish in those areas, and it looks like it's been there for much more than 10 years. So it creates a very natural look to it. Lots of ducks, a different variety of ducks in the ponds, so it creates a very natural look within a, you know, retail setting, which is right behind, right behind the, this park area. This is another example that we did more recently. This is as, just after it was planted, as it's establishing, same kind of concept. We have the pond. This one, we ended up lining the outside of the pond with stone, and we did a wildflower native planting on the outside edge with a little more heavy in grasses. So they actually have the option to, if they want to maintain it. Sometimes people look at that native grasses look as kind of a messy type look, and so they want to have a tendency to want to mow it. So they actually have the option to mow this and kind of maintain it, keep more of a formal look to it in this, in this example. One other thing that was talked about in the last meeting is there were some dimensions that were requested on some of the open space areas, just to show that we are maintaining the 25-foot minimum dimensions on the open space. So we've added those up in the frontage, around the clubhouse area, where those areas were, we're getting close to that 25 feet in this little area in here as well. So we're, just to help confirm that we are meeting that, that minimum dimension requirement. So we submitted the plans, we submitted a response letter as part of this, which highlights all of this that I just discussed as well. And that ends my presentation. If you guys have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Can you pull up the initial slide with the plan?
Sure.
Okay. So I know we had some dialogue at the last meeting on lots 24 and 25. Do you anticipate that you're going to be using existing landscape buffer there where that transition is in Canterwood into the new, into the villas?
So you're asking if there would be natural vegetation that would be there?
Yeah.
That, that space would probably not be wide enough to keep natural vegetation within that space. We're talking, by the time you do the grading and all that, you destroy the root zones of the trees. So it's better to take that out and then, and then have the homeowner replant it and create that screen.
So you plan on putting a landscape buffer there then after?
Yeah, and that's probably going to be up to the homeowner. I mean, they're going to want to do that naturally. Usually when a home goes in of this, of this type, they end up putting arborvitae or something along the lines, along the edge to create that screen.
Can you show on your cursor exactly where you're talking?
Yes, that would be on this area down here.
Okay. So in, in back of those lots right there, I'm sorry.
Yes.
My glasses, 23 and 24.
The...
Of the other side, across the street.
Yeah. Four, five of them.
23 and 24, so this will be 23 and 24.
Yeah, so Carl, were you talking about buffer in front there or behind?
I was talking 24 and 25. There was some discussion on that, and also from behind, 24 and 23 also.
And behind 24 and 25, yes.
No, that's open space.
23 and 24 is open space?
Behind 23 and 24.
Yeah, so, so 23 and 24 would be these two units right here, and that is open space behind there. And we are, what we would do on the grading plan is get back to existing grade as soon as possible and maintain as much as we can existing vegetation in this, this location. So the goal would absolutely be to maintain natural vegetation here.
So grading, and then you're returning it to, I mean, kind of mincing words, but the goal, or you will return it to, I mean, that's...
Yeah, yes, yeah.
I mean, this is green space, so the idea is it's supposed to remain in its natural state.
Yeah, and that's an excellent question. So what will end up happening there is on our landscape plan, we'll identify those areas. So like, say, there's an area where we end up having to grade just a little bit more to keep our slopes somewhat natural, as opposed to a two-to-one slope. As we get into the open space, what we end up doing there is specifying the native plantings in there, so it kind of goes back to a natural vegetation. And it'll, we'll specify probably a wildflower seed mix, and if, as long as the homeowner doesn't do anything with it, it'll actually start to grow trees and stuff like that, and really go back to its, its natural condition. But again, like I said, we're going to try and limit any disturbance within the open space at all.
Okay.
Sure.
Yes.
If my question...
Yeah, sure.
...question or...
Sure.
So in the open space, I understand what the disturbance is for, I mean, to leave it in the water, but it sounds like you're anticipating having to grade and clear into open space areas that is not being utilized for, for those, and possibly just to grade out lots? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, no. So, so I can't, because we have not done the final engineering on this one, I can't say with 100% certainty that we won't grade a little bit into the open space. But I mean, if we, if we need to put in a small retaining wall to make that happen, I'm sure we'd be able to do it, if it's that important to not grade into it.
I guess it was my expectations, and I don't know if it's the board's expectations as well, is that any areas that are not being utilized for like the stormwater and bringing the utilities in would remain as such, and you wouldn't be having to go in and grade for those areas.
Right, right. We can, we can work on that.
Yeah, I would, I think my expectation would be that it is maintained and that if it's disturbed, it's replaced, not like...
Yeah.
I guess my thing is, you know, for an example, if you took out a tree, then I'd, a tree replaced.
Tree replanted and replaced.
Well, or, you know, I mean, if we're talking about a really old one, and then you put in a little, you know, I don't know that I think that's... The purpose of RCD would be, I think, to support Mrs. Freeman's comments, is that we're maintaining the open space. We're trying to keep it as it was and not destroy it and say, well, we're going to plan a bunch of stuff, and in 20 years, it'll be close to back to the way it was when we started. That wouldn't, in my view, be the purpose of RCD.
Right, yeah. And if we, if we end up grading into those areas a little bit, I think one of the things that we'll make sure we add on the landscape plan is some trees to help kind of speed that up a little bit. And the code actually does address that. Says it, this is within the RCD code, "Any areas within the designated open space that is disturbed during construction or otherwise not preserved in its natural state, other than common areas such as required setback areas on both sides of the new streets, shall be landscaped with vegetation that is compatible with the natural characteristic of the site." The landscape plan shall be provided to the township, indicating the species size and condition of the, of the new trees, plants, ground cover that will be used to revegetate any disturbed areas. So we will, as part of our landscape plan, we'll definitely address that. That's, I'm actually a landscape architect. That's like my, my strong point, and so we'll make sure that it gets, gets revegetated.
Any follow-up comments or questions, then?
I mean, obviously, we'll be looking at the subdivision plans as they move through the county's process, so, you know, we'll be kind of looking to minimize that.
Yep, and we'll, we'll definitely work together to make that happen.
Okay, if there's no other questions from the board, and you don't have anything else, what I'll do is I'll invite anybody, the public that has a comment or question to come forward at this time, and go for next.
Hello.
Hello, good evening.
I'm Barbara Kilfoyle, Town 100 Meadow Lake Court, and I shared with you guys earlier this week some of those landscape buffer pictures from our previous expansion of Canterwood and Hobby Horse that was done by Zerkel Construction back in 1988. And you could just go down to the, to the vacated cul-de-sac and look and see, as I showed you in the pictures, pretty significant landscape buffer that he put in, and you don't even see the new homes of Old Mill that he put in, because he just, the way he put the homes on the new lots and provided left the trees, the native trees, to hide the multiple above-ground utilities. And then he, you stand there, you can't even see the, the new homes that he created. And it's sad, because you can literally just pan your eyes three homes down to the Lockstromin property and ask yourself, why can't this happen again? In 2021, we're supposed to be better than we were back in the 80s, but it's just, there's nothing. There's no buffer between the old community of 1950 and 1988 homes and what they're putting in now, and I don't understand it. There should be something there, there was something there. There was something put in the community, and we should be looking for something that is consistent with what's already there. I'm not talking about other, you know, subdivisions. This is what's present three doors down from where they want to put new homes, right next to our existing homes. And we should be looking for the best possible outcome here for our community, and that's what I'm asking. I'm not trying to block anything or block anybody, but I want something that looks the best. And we already have something that looks really good. Zerkel did a really great job. He really did. When you take a look at the pictures, he did a great job of leaving those, leaving homes protected, leaving the native trees up, and that's what I'm asking for in those 24 and 25 lots.
Okay, thank you.
So this is, this is it. Right.
All right. Okay. Does the applicant have any, does he, does he think you'd like to respond to that, or...
We had agreed to leave the cul-de-sac, Tom Rebe, 10210 Gosey Square, Concord Township. We had agreed, and we had made provision to leave that cul-de-sac, that's what she's talking about, available. Looking at the two houses there, I mean, Silverstone driveway, clear clutter all the way, actually into the next lot, he had to buy a piece of property to put his driveway. So it was, the trees that she, I think she may be talking about were Lockstromin trees. They weren't on that property. Other than that, the homeowner is adjacent to her and in favor of the plan. She lives in a totally different area, so they're not opposed to it. I'm not sure what her concern might be.
Okay. All right. Okay, is there any other questions or comments from the board, discussion? I will, I know we, I've got an email here, and it did come up, and I know that the resident that brought it up is not here, but he sent all of us an email and was discussing with respect to the traffic. I know there was a conversation with the traffic calming circle as a possibility, but that's not really our, that's up to the developer and landowners and whatnot, but that access. And I know that the question was asked about what makes this particular development different than other developments in Concord, and one was referenced that doesn't have, has only one way in and out. What I would suggest is that in this case, this was a temporary road that was always planned to be connected. So that was a stubbed street that was made into a temporary cul-de-sac, and it seems to me most people would never realize that. So the, I think that's one differentiating factor, that the intent and plan when that road was put in was always going to have that interconnect. As to why some of the ones, and we don't have it everywhere in the township, there's a lot of reasons. There's geography, there's adjacent properties that aren't planned for development and all of that. So I don't think it's something that we can always get. So when we try to have these rezones, that's what they're there for, is when we have that opportunity, we try to make those interconnects, because we don't have it every place, and it is generally a safety concern. So I know I haven't responded to the email, and since he's not here, I'll make sure and do that, but I think, I think, I think this is a good step forward as far as, I mean, I've looked at this, and I think it's a good use of the green space, and it provides something that, it provides a fair amount of buffering that wouldn't be there otherwise.
When I looked at, you know, evaluating both of the plans, the R1 versus the RCD, you know, clearly, I agree with...
So I know I haven't responded to the email, and since he's not here, I'll make sure and do that, but I think, I think this is a good step forward as far as, I mean, I've looked at this, and I think it's a good use of the green space, and it provides something that, it provides a fair amount of buffering that wouldn't be there otherwise.
When I looked at, you know, evaluating both of the plans, the R1 versus the RCD, you know, clearly, I agree with Lake County Plan and Commission in their assessment that, you know, this property in question would be better developed as an RCD, rather than the conventional R1 zoning district in order to preserve open space in sensitive areas, following the township's contraprehensive plan from 2004. And to our resident that's here tonight, who has concerns about, you know, natural buffer and the green space being maintained, I think this plan clearly will allow for that. Obviously, until we get to, you know, the engineering and further development of the plan, to know exactly how much, but there's been a considerable effort made by the developer to reach out and work and do his due diligence with the residents within that area on Canterwood to try to make accommodations in regards to this development, and that goes a long way. You know, my assessment is, it's much more, you know, the RCD is much more compatible for this neighborhood than the R1. I mean, I just, you know, I just think with over 30%, right now, but probably over 30% green space, open space, it's being maintained. The transition, the walking paths, I just think it flows better, and it's more compatible for that area than the R1.
So, I think that you did a nice job in trading something and coming back with changes, and we appreciate, you know, your patience. And on behalf of our resident, I guess if there's any other type of buffer that can happen in that specific spot, I think that would be greatly appreciated.
I guess, a home's going to be built there, and actually, as you build a home, you're aware that you can't just clear and clean the lot right to the home, you have to leave an area to grade. So that said, I'll tell you what we did, and I know another point that was brought up. There is 36% open area in this plan. And what our intention, we would like to do, hopefully you agree with that, I mean, I brought meeting notes from the zoning before, I don't want to read them in the record unless you want me to. I think if you read it, it was always agreed that it would be part of the open area in every other subdivision. What we would like to do, that taken into effect, is perhaps close the open area down between the lots that are adjacent to the, right on Canterwood, adjacent to the public thing, to reduce the open area somewhat, but we still have 36%, to give it a little, maybe a larger lot there, perhaps create a little bit more buffer for that lot. In other words, if you look at...
Which one?
We have a 25-foot strip, we have a 25-foot strip between, yeah, between the clubhouse and 28. What we'd like to do, and again, I know we have 36%, we have plenty to do, if we believe. What we would like to do is close that down, so, and obviously, we're not counting it as open area, but still leave a little space between the clubhouse and that home, and perhaps make the lots on that side larger to give it more of an area and a chance to create more of the same kind of a side yard they would have anyhow, if it was under an R1. Because again, and you remember, in any R1 district, there is no buffer between lots. In fact, and as we suggested, Mr. Silver, he lives closer to his neighbor than he will be probably this home, but again, understanding that we have 36% open area, including the natural retention ponds which are going to be in place. That is one intention we would have, is to tighten that down and move it over to create a larger lot on that side, make larger lots come in, which I think would, again, help the transition into the neighborhood.
Yeah, it does seem like it's a tight spot. I mean, I know...
And again, what I'm talking about is, I don't know if we have it up there, the area next to the clubhouse, there's a 25-foot...
Yeah, I saw, yeah.
And we're looking to tighten that down to maybe to 500, and they had some extra footage on that side.
On the other lots, that they would all...
Yeah, make the lots on that side perhaps a little bit larger. Which, if we weren't counting open area, we wouldn't be able to do that.
Right.
But I think, again, and hopefully you review it and you understand it is 36%, we're offset a 40%, which would give us two more units, so.
I just had one more question. The houses on Hous, along Hous, are those going to be circle driveways, or are they going to be...
You know, my get, what we also want to do there is this, we would like to take those lots and possibly make them a bit deeper, to give it a further setback than is required, to enable more parking for those people, if they have guests, because they're on a straightened road, and perhaps provide a turnaround. So we may increase those. We're looking to make each of the lots in the subdivision really as good as it can be for the person owning it. Lots are going to sell regardless, but we also like to take in consideration the user of the home. And our thought is, if we could potentially take those lots and make them a bit deeper, further setbacks with a little turnaround, it would be very helpful to every owner in there of those three homes anyhow.
So I guess, given the last couple of comments that you've mentioned, and because we're, we have two things we're considering here, one is the zoning classification change, and then also the approval of the preliminary plan, which, as I mentioned in the last public meeting, is preliminary because it has the ability to, are any of these things, I mean, where are you with these things, you're saying making those other lots deeper and then making that adjustment, is that something that you'd be willing to say that you would make that part of your preliminary plan, so that'd be something we're approving tonight?
I'll tell you, we're suggesting we would like to do this, again, we're also understanding that we have a, you know, we don't have an argument with anybody. I mean, if you like, I would read all zoning and everyone that's spoken in zoning saying that the retention areas are in fact part of the open area, and they always have been. If that's agreed, we'll agree to that. If that's agreed, like, we can't, what we can't do is drop down and say, well, we're going to reduce our end, if someone comes back, you're going to lose the unit, and then we get in a battle with anybody. We're not looking to do that, okay? We're not. But yeah, so far as...
So those two things you'd be willing to do?
So far as we could agree that we have, we are able to have a similar use of the zoning text that every other developer in this text is, I, we would agree to do that. Again, we're not going to make it a zero distance between the clubhouse and the first lot, because we think there should be a little buffer there too, because that's going to be a noise-making area. The lot that's next to Silverstone's, Colonel, they're not going to be noise-making people, more than likely. They may, you do get a few bodies our age, but, you know, not too many, okay? But there will be more activity in the clubhouse, so we would like to leave the area there, but we would like to somehow make the lots transitioning a bit larger.
I, I, I don't know, I mean, obviously, all three of us have to vote, so I don't want to speak for anybody other than myself, but I guess what I'm seeing is you're making some suggestions which sound interesting, and I would like them, and I'm very curious if you'd be willing to commit to those as opposed to just saying, and I guess, from my perspective, the answer, the short answer to your question, sir, is yes. I can...
The answer to that question is your county, and I would say we will commit to that, because I think it makes the project better.
And can you comment on Hillsley? I did have a resident that was asking about, so the setback from, so Hillsley now, there are some trees, that those are all going to be down?
You know, I don't know the trees on his lot, we put that street in, in fact, if you look, I'm next to her as well, I should have cut, when I put that lot in, I should have taken, built up frontwards, I should have cut that off and made it all my property. But that said, all right, what we will do in marketing this, I think this is laid out for larger, deeper houses, if possible, but we're not going to bend to this. If we get somebody to buy somewhere a shorter home, we would be happy to do to keep it away from the other house. We cannot commit to that, though, because we don't know who's going to buy that home, and what home they're going to want to own on that lot, on that particular lot. So, again, I will say, we would try to maybe possibly direct somewhat shorter homes on there if we could, but we cannot guarantee that.
So that'll be all clear?
And again, he has a whole, that whole, his entire lot's wooded.
Right.
So if he doesn't take his down, you're always going to see a neighbor behind you, and they're neighbors, they're my next, they're actually my next-door neighbor.
So, but, so he has trees in his...
His lot's wholly wooded.
Okay.
Yeah. So in other words, he doesn't, we didn't take down lots in that when we built that home. We don't take down anything necessarily. The fact is, we would have loved to have provided an open area on that side, but the taffy in that property doesn't allow it. What you do is you'd be creating some problems on the south end for the houses there. We try to avoid problems and make the entire layout as good as it could possibly be. And again, if this was R1, the same situation would occur.
And it's the same density bonus, Heather, from a 30 to a 36?
Yeah, we're not gaining any bonus. Actually, we probably could trim it down and make it 40%, get two more, we didn't want to do that. We actually went out of our way, if you notice on there, to make larger lots than are required on some of the areas, to provide for some of the owners to have larger, again, we're putting in a remedy in that this size scope of a project does not call for. We're doing it because we think it's really going to be well-received. It's going to be like, for us, it's a signature property, it's going to be the largest one we're doing. It's signature, because it is our home, you know, we've been, I've lived in Concord Township nearly 50 years myself, which is more than a virtual year, except for Mike. Just kidding. Well, well, yeah, well, you are old, I think, I remember when you were in your 20s. Anything else? And again, as Jeff said, we want to thank each of you for being reasonable, for calling and going on your way to schedule an additional meeting. We really thank them, we really appreciate the three of you, and all of you that are present.
I have one question for you, and I apologize if this is in some of the docs that I got and I didn't read, is the maintenance of the ponds and the cul-de-sac landscaping, is that an HOA responsibility?
That will be HOA responsibility, correct. You know, as you know, you can't make an easement there, because it's not, it's on a public right of way, but that will be an HOA responsibility, and I think it'll be well-received, because everyone there is going to want to maintain...
Right.
All the landscaping in the entire area is going to be included. This will not be going out of the way as an additional, but what we're intending on is each home to have landscaping included in the plan. Those people that are basically empty nesters or have kids that are over 18. Thank you, thanks again.
Okay, Mr. Lucas, pursuant to Mr. Reeby's commitment or willingness to make the commitment, if we were to approve, I mean, how do we address those commitments as far as, is there a way we can do that?
Well, you're going to make a motion in the affirmative to approve the requested amendment to the zoning from R1 to RCD. Correspondently, the revised development plan they submitted, which I think the date was 6/23/21, if I remember correctly?
Yeah.
And with, assuming it's all right with Ms. Reeby, would the further modifications specifically identify them, as agreed to by the applicant?
Would we would basically be by accepting, by giving approval to this preliminary plan, be, because that's the way it's reflected in the plan, so the motion to approve this would take, would satisfy him, correct?
Well, the revised plan dated 6/23, if what Mr. Reeby is representing, based on your discussions included within that revised plan, then that's fine.
Because it says 36 on that plan, is that correct? Right, yes. So the plan dated, we haven't received at the township the 24th, reflects, reflects those, reflects it in the way that Mr. Reeby has indicated, correct?
The things that he was hoping to do with that?
No, no, not the things he was hoping to do, the green space percentage.
Correct.
Not coming up and explain the summary of the changes that, yeah, these plans reflect 36%.
Approving this except that, as he's asking, in favor of those two other stipulations.
Well, he ran the caps on both, 36 and 38. Right, 36 versus 30.
Versus less the... Okay, if there's no other comments, I believe we need a motion to close the public hearing.
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, I agree that we close the public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, is there any further discussion? As I said, I think, I appreciate that the applicant has come forward, and I think between the zoning commission meeting, and even between this meeting and the trustee meeting, that you've worked with the residents, and I appreciate that. I think that's an important part. These zoning classification decisions are never easy ones, they're always disruptive, especially when you have, you know, mature neighborhoods that have been alongside property that's been waiting many decades to be developed, are always difficult. I've done a couple of these in the township now, and it's, Concord's a growing community, and we need to be thinking about how we develop the township. So I think your plan is nice, and I think you've done some work, and I think it's a better deal than if we were to be zoning it at the current R1. Okay, well, if there's no other comment or discussion, then I would entertain a motion to...
I will, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve of the zoning commission's recommendation for the zoning amendment application, including changes from R1 to R2 RCD, including further modifications agreed to by the developers.
Well, you want to, including the approval of the preliminary development plan as revised most recently on 6/23/21?
As revised on 6/23/2021, with modifications, with modifications agreed to by the developer.
Do we need to spell those out?
And so specifically...
I'm happy to do that, but we're going to strike out the 30%, which would be, that we had a different...
Yes. We're approving this at your 36%, so you're getting, yes.
Or do we need to specify those?
Do we need to specify those modifications?
A big pardon?
Do we need to be specific as to the two modifications Mr. Reeby mentioned in the motion or just...
If it's in the revised plan, you don't.
It's not, they were verbalized.
Then you want to add those in addition.
So that's the narrowing of the open space between...
The narrowing of the open space between, where is it? 28.
28 and the clubhouse.
And the clubhouse.
On the south side.
On the south side, and then also the...
57 through 59.
57 through 59, deeper setback, with the deeper setback.
Excuse me?
So that's, that's the motion.
That's the motion.
Do we have all of it? Does it need to say it more continuous again?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I'm not following exactly what we're agreeing to modify. I just, maybe it's going to come out in your discussion, I guess, I just, are we eliminating the open space between 28 and the clubhouse, or narrowing it?
Narrowly, narrowly.
To specify, I mean, for the, are we then getting, are we getting a trade-off for like a, something happening near 25 then?
To adjust the lots.
So, are we creating a buffer there, or how is that going, you know? I guess I'm not clear on what the applicant agreed to there.
I suggest if we make it so that at least 15 foot on the side, so you have the same deck as an R1 side, again, to create a buffer, I don't think...
I don't think...
It's not a buffer, though, it's just a larger setback.
Yes.
15 versus 10.
No, they're all 15, we will move that around, narrow that opening, and then create at least a minimum of 15, so that can maybe be a wider lot.
And those lots that you're widening are potentially 25.
25.
Yeah, so that allows them to shift 25 further away.
Correct, just moving some space to create more of a buffer, if you will.
Yeah, because we, if we had gone less than 25, and that doesn't count, obviously, you're 25, 29, that's a lot, so you're going to, but we're at 36, we also like to make, we want to make some, back on foot, or you'll be on the right, you know, those are the things we'd like to do.
We got your 36.
Sorry, just for a point of clarification, the developer is asking you to stipulate to 36. There's some narrowing of a buffer zone, but when he comes back for final plan review, I think we need... I think we need a stipulation that this is what he's modifying to, and he doesn't come back and say, well, I've got another 5% to play with.
Well, no, we're not stipulating, we're stipulating over 30, we're not stipulating over 30, we're saying over 30.
Right, we're stipulating 36 today, but then when he comes back, he's gonna say, well, we're over 30, and he's at 30.1, you're losing 5% of space.
But we're only getting a bonus base.
On a preliminary, on a preliminary to a final.
In all respect, we may decide to call it a lot.
I'm sorry, could you have...
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, what I would say, we don't have finalized plan, we had to turn around, look at this, we're gonna see if we can conserve any more sensitive areas during the planning of this. So, all I'm suggesting is, we could have made this 40% by cutting some lots down, and we don't wanna do that.
I don't, yeah, I really just talked about...
What I'm saying is, we're only stipulating, we're not saying in 36, we're stipulating that our retention areas are part of the open area.
Yes.
That's what we're saying. And if we drop a little 36, we're not gonna create more lots, but, but we're not guaranteeing, Andy, excuse me, we're not guaranteeing 36, what we're saying, it's gonna be reduced, we will not be below 30, we'll probably be 32, 33, and also, we have to give our engineer time to lay out the stormwater properly, so you don't have bigger V's going to stormwater. We're not gonna talk, you know what I'm saying? In other words, I'm not an engineer, and he said earlier, this is not an engineer plan, so we wanna, these plans we say we'd like to do today is what we would like to do, all right? And, I don't know what else to say, it's like, the name of 36%, we're doing the same thing as the 30, we're not gonna guarantee the number until, you know, until we're finally done with it.
I guess, I'd like to ask my lawyer...
Unless you like to stipulate that I'll get like some in-between bonus or another unit, which I'm not, you're not gonna do either, so, it's not in the code.
Mr. Lucas, I have a question for you. I guess I wanna clarify a little bit more, I'm just, you know, I have a developer who's offering to make some things, and I'm just trying to, I don't want, I don't want talk here to be talk, I want talk to be something that's gonna be delivered for the sake of the township, so, I guess my question is, is that something that's realistic here, or do we just make them, you know, do your options and things?
He's got on the revised plan 36%.
Correct.
He's talking about potentially going, you know, in an optimal sense, down to 30.
Well, but we're not looking, we're saying, we're only, we're getting a bonus base on 30, we're not planning on going to 30, we're planning on leaving what we have.
But regardless of whether it's 36 or 30, the incentive is the same amount.
Right, right.
It's the same bonus amount.
Right.
It's anything over 30.
We're not getting a bonus to go above 30. We don't wanna be below 30. There's no bonus to go above 30.
I understand, I'll go back to my original question, is this states 36%, if we're approving this with conditions, he has the latitude, I don't.
Latitude to shrink that to make the lots better, as we talked about.
Right, so approving this gives the 36%, plus those two conditions gets us...
The approval of the preliminary plan.
Yeah, you're fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just want, you know, thank you for asking, Amy, I guess I just, from my perspective, like, I would prefer that the modifications were very specific, so then we could request the updated preliminary plan, showing how those two changes were going to be accommodated. Specifically, you know, between, behind 57 and 59, are we talking, you know, how much deeper, 20 feet deeper, so you can get that 50-foot setback, to be similar with Hoos Road, or how much deeper are you looking at making those lots, 57 through 59? And then the other, you know, how, what do you do, Amy, and if you want to eliminate completely the open space between the clubhouse and sublot 28, then I'd like to hear that, you know, as a modification.
No, we wanna leave a buffer between the clubhouse and the house. We want to narrow that open that.
To like, what, to how deep, like to how, like five feet? I mean, what's the point then, you're gonna, you have to clear the trees then, there really won't be any...
You know, I gotta say, people are talking over each other, and it's impossible for the court recorder, all right? And I mean, I'm saying this across the board, one at a time, please.
And Mr. Reeby, grab the microphone if you have anything to say.
Okay, to answer the question, I think I, I was only suggesting what we would like to do, next to the clubhouse, we do wanna have a buffer between the clubhouse and the house adjacent to it.
Right.
Instead of 25 feet, it may become 8 or 10, we don't know, okay? We'd like to take, and we will take at least a portion of that 10 or 15 feet we gained, add it up to the lot next to Silverstein, to make it more, a wider lot, more compatible with the size lots in that neighborhood, and we can...
What's the, I agree with Mrs. Freeman, as far as wanting to have something tangible in our motion, so what is a minimum amount? Is there a minimum distance? If you're gonna swap some open space, I see what you're doing, you're saying, hey, I got a wide ribbon here, and I can move some of it to the other end of that ribbon houses, you wanna trade, what's a minimum amount of space?
Well, not really, again, I'm not asking to trade, I can't tell you what we would like to do, all right? So, I'm not trying to trade, all right? What I said we would do, we're gonna do, all right? What we wanna do is, we're gonna, we have to look over that and see what type of a buffer we should have between that lot and a clubhouse, which has got a pool in it, all right? And maybe we wanna leave an additional 10-foot buffer there, we're not sure, we have to determine that. We will take at least five, or maybe 10 feet, and put it on the lot next to that, to the one there, so, again...
What I just heard you say then, something that we could be specific, is that'd be a minimum of five feet would go on to the end of 20, would...
Yeah, a minimum of five, maybe 10. Minimum of five, we would add another minimum of five feet onto the width of that lot.
For sure.
I mean, but, you know, it's interesting, you do that, we say we do it, we do it.
On to 28, Mr. Reeby, or on to 25?
What's that?
Where are you putting the five feet, on to 28 or on to 25?
We're looking at five feet, a minimum of five feet on to 25.
Thank you.
And then, I think we talked about lots 57 through 59, the setback for Hoos would be...
And we're looking at taking, maybe making those lots deeper, potentially another 10 feet, and we give another 10-foot setback, potentially. We have to, we have to take again, look at the, I haven't, we, how do I say?
What is the setback now?
30.
So you're looking at a minimum of 40?
40, which would be 60 from the street, which kinda gives, if you look at summer, that was zoned to 30, we did all these in 40, so that's what it'd be like, if you go through summer with subdivision.
You got all that?
Which would then give people the ability to park three or four cars, like six cars in the driveway, potentially. Okay?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I would...
Sorry about, sorry about giving you, giving more...
Make a motion to approve the zoning commission's recommendation for the zoning amendments with modifications specifically agreed to by the developer, which are a minimum of five feet on sublot 25, and then a minimum of 40-foot setback on lots 57 through 59. And I'd like to approve those stipulations in the motion.
Was that a motion that made adequately?
Going back to the original motion, which hasn't been seconded yet.
From our original motion?
You're asking for approval in accordance with the recommendation of the zoning commission, that the zoning be amended for this particular project and parcels from R1 to RCD, together with approval of the revised preliminary development plan that was submitted dated 6/23/21, and those two additional modifications as agreed to by the applicant.
Just so we're clear, mine said 6/24.
Yeah.
As the date received.
That was, we got it.
Date of the plan is 6/23, stamped in here.
Thank you, Mr. Ross.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the zoning commission's recommendation to amend the preliminary plan from R1 to RCD.
No, no, you're not amending the plan. You want to make a motion to approve the rezoning of this property from R1 to RCD in accordance with the recommendation of the zoning commission, and approve the preliminary development plan dated 6/23/21, and subject further to the two additional stipulations agreed to by the applicant, dealing with the narrowing by the clubhouse and lots 57 to 59. Tom, I'm sorry, one minute.
Simply, the open, the retention...
The 36%, the 36% is already in the revised plan from 6/23, which is why I didn't mention it, Tom.
I could say so moved, right?
Yes, you can, I was just gonna suggest that.
Because I'm not gonna get it right.
So moved as summarized by the law director.
As summarized by the law director.
Thank you, I second the motion.
Okay, roll call.
This is Lucci.
Yes.
Mr. Don Dorfer?
Yes.
Mr. McIntosh?
Yes.
Just approved with modifications.
Okay, and that will adjourn.
Yeah, we'd like to thank you all for having this meeting, I'm sorry for...
Congratulations.